Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call the Missoula City Council Meeting of March 19th, 2018 to order. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance). The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States fair and just and equal. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please let the record note that with the exception of Mr. Bob Losberg, all members are present this evening. We've got minutes from the meeting of March 12th without objection. It will be approved. Seeing none, we'll move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Ray Byan.
Thanks. Tomorrow, Tuesday, the 20th, Committee of the Whole will meet at 11:30 to 1 o'clock at the Doubletree Edgewater Hotel, 100 Madison, I think is their address. And that'll be the investor luncheon for the Economic Partnership. We expect a quorum of council to go that. Committee of the Whole will meet on the 21st, that's this coming Wednesday, beginning at 8:50 and going until 9:35. Public Safety and Health will follow that meeting from 9:40 to 9:55. Landings and Planning meets from 10 o'clock till 11:10. Public Works will meet from 11:15 to 11:50. Administration and Finance Committee will be our last committee meeting of the day from 11:55 until noon. All those meetings on the 21st are being held right here in the council chambers at 140 West Pine Street.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Byan. Any changes to the committee schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Any general public comment? Ms. Dudek.
Thank you. Thank you, City Council people. I'm Representative Kimberly Dudek. I represent House District 94 and all people in Missoula County and Montana, but it is the northwest corner of Missoula County. Today I stand before you because March is Women's History Month, and it celebrates the significant contributions women of all races, ethnicities, and backgrounds have made to the world. Montana has always been a leader in women's equality. We were the first state to send a woman to the U.S. Congress in 1916 when Jeanette Rankin was elected. Montana also provided women with the right to vote six years before women gained this right nationally. So we've always been trailbreak leaders in this area. Although Native American women did not gain this right until 1924, so we do have some equality issues. Women, though, play a critical role in today's communities. We are great leaders. We provide strong advocacy in many areas. And while the 20th century is a pivotal time for growth for women entering politics, women remain underrepresented. Today, I ask you to join me in recognizing, to celebrate Women in Public Office Day. This is part of a national movement that 31 communities and 22 states have recognized today as celebrating Women in Public Office Day. It is a day to recognize the contribution women have made in public office, and I would ask that you consider observing March 19th every year as a day to celebrate women in public office and to take activities and recognize the women, their contributions. So with that, I thank you for your service, all of you, men and women. And I think it's especially important that we advocate for children, women, girls, boys, all having equal representation and a fair way of being involved in their communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Dudek. Mr. Lucino.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Engen, Bob Lucino, what about the rattlesnake? I'm here mainly to, I want to acknowledge Mayor Engen and head of one of the departments here who extended one hour of their time to me last week on a public safety concern that's not only impressing and affecting my own family, but one that affects all of Missoula. And I again want to thank you for giving me that time. Heidi West and Brian Losberg, as I've expressed to you, since they're my council reps, I'd like to get together with you sometime in the future, and thank you for your interest in this concern. And I'm also the proud parent of Sylvia Lucino back here with the Hellgate kids and very proud of what they're doing for the whole school gun issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucino.
Thank you for your work.
Other general public comment this evening?
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper. I don't know if I'll get to the Soviet art of brainwashing tonight or not. What I have said before this council on many occasions, many occasions, complaining and pointing out that Missoula has an alcohol problem. Now we know we have one, and our mayor knows the pressures behind young children or young adults drinking, and what do he have to offer our community? Brewery on our brewery corner, a bar scene that gets out of hand and drunk driving. And I just, I can't express to you how much this drinking affects our kids. I have six children that grew up in this community, and every one of them drank before anything else. And alcohol is an entry drug. You can't, you, I don't care what you say when you present a community of, I think they said 116,000 in a condensed area, and you have a brewery or distillery or bars all over town. What do you think these kids are looking at? You have pictures of moms with a glass of beer in one hand and a six-year-old standing right next to her. It's just ridiculous. Our kids are being brainwashed into drinking. And the other thing that concerns me, it's psychotropic drugging. Any adult in this room or out in the audience is that's on psychotropic drugs and has their kids on psychotropic drugs. The incidences of violence and suicide. We wonder how we have so many people commit suicide. Look at what you're doing to the population of the youth in Missoula. They're being brought up in school that the kids are unruly, and I see this and I know it as, because they're on psychotropics at age four. We have to do something different. Show our kids that we can be different, not that we can just control our drinking or control our drugging and then blame them for getting in trouble because they do meth, cocaine, heroin. They sell their psychotropic drugs on the streets. And, you know, it's gotta change. And I hope you parents out there in the audience and on this city council will see your way through to curtailing all this booze and all the drugs right from the beginning. You teach a child that a drug is the key to his happiness, then when he grows out of this drug and he turns 18, 19, 21, that's your problem. So drugs and alcohol, and I hope you're happy with that because it's ruined so many lives in this town, it's incorrigible.
Mr. Moore.
Sometimes in the past, I thought I had a couple of good ideas, but nothing approaches that last lead. Our kids are drinking themselves to death. I don't know what our policemen are doing. We can't hire enough policemen because we've got to spend too much on welfare to shopping centers and dentists and coffee shops and banks and everybody else while our kids are going to... One thing I think she left out, she didn't concentrate or mention casinos. I think we need about five more casinos. That will mean at least two more pawn shops, and that's development as we know it here in Missoula. In the paper, there was Missoula Surveying Residents. Took me a long time to quit laughing after I read this. There's maybe some people don't know, this was a survey concerning local sales taxes, terrorism taxes, what does the citizens think is important, and that point in general. The city has heard from residents who there is an inordinate burden on homeowners in the state for raising tax revenues. These people just don't know that we've got to support developers, professionals, shopping center owners, casinos, dentists, coffee shops, and on and on and on. Got to keep them supported. This article sort of talks about taxes, taxes, taxes. Some of the questions it's going to ask about the perceived importance of city services such as police, firefighters, planning, roads, housing, permitting, and parks and recreation, and what they, should there be more funding or less funding on those things? I suggest, and this is really a disguise, to lay the foundation for increasing taxes so we can spend more money on what we want to do instead of what the citizens want. We may need another bridge across reserve. Could have two more, one in the middle and one on the other end. If you would stop this tax incremental financing, which isn't really a tax, you call it a tax, it comes back to the, in the form of a tax, but it goes to another developer or shopping center, whoever else the mayor, MRA, and this city council want to give it to. So I really think you shouldn't even have to spend this $24,000 to the University of Montana to conduct this thing. Just stop all these welfare programs and you could solve the problem. The main problem from where we stand now should not be to get more revenue, it should be to spend less. Thank you.
Any, pardon me, any other general public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to our consent agenda items on that agenda where, pardon me, voted unanimously by council standing committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Ray Byan will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so those in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering. We'll take comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Ray Byan.
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has five items. The first is always is to approve claims, which are the city's accounts payable in the amount of $526,839.52 for checks that are dated March 20th, that's tomorrow, 2018. Number two is a very, very, very long motion. It's our annual bid awards for street maintenance materials. So each one is about street maintenance materials. The first is to Calumet Refining in Great Falls for 500 tons of emulsified asphalt, which is CRS 2P oil at $455.25 a ton for a total of $227,625, and authorizing staff to return the bid bonds. The second is to award to Knife River of Missoula, Montana for 2,000 tons of hot-mixed asphalt, grade B asphalt. Cost for that is $51.82 a ton for a total of $103,640, and authorize the return of bid bonds. The third is to award a bid to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana for 4,000 tons of sand surfacing, $16 a ton for a total of $64,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Let's see, the fourth one is to award a bid for, to Knife River of Missoula, Montana for 4,000 tons of 3/8-inch seal coat aggregate at a cost of $34.18 a ton for a total of $136.72, is that typo on the agenda? Excuse me, it's a, for a total of $136,720, and authorize the return of bid bonds. I think that's right. Look, yes, that seems correct. Mouth seems good there. The next one is to award a bid to Knife River of Missoula for 3,000 tons of driveway-grade asphalt at $56.82 a ton for a total of $170,460, and authorize the return of bid bonds. The next is to Knife River of Missoula for 1,000 tons of grade D hot-mixed asphalt at $51.82 a ton for a total cost of $51,820, authorizing the return of bid bonds there. Awarding a bid to Western Excavating of Missoula, Montana for 1,000 tons of drain aggregate at $38, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line, at $30 a ton for a total of $30,000, and authorize the return of bid bonds. The next one is an award to Knife River of Missoula for 500 tons of half-inch seal coat aggregate at $39.18 a ton for a total of $19,590, and authorize the return of bid bonds. And the final one is awarding to Knife River of Missoula, Montana for 200 tons of half-inch sand surfacing at $14.18 a ton for a total cost of $28,836, also authorizing the return of bid bonds on that one. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Western Excavating Incorporated of Missoula, Montana for construction services on the Fourth Howell Second Street water main replacement project for a amount not to exceed $870,986.90, and authorize the return of bid bonds. Number four is to appoint Alexis Gibson, Regan Whitworth, Christine Ackland, and Catherine Ipsen to the Open Space Advisory Committee for terms commencing immediately and ending on January 25th, 2021, and Deanna Bublitz for the term beginning immediately and ending on January 25th, 2020. Number five is a second reading and final, second and final reading of an ordinance, council's adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 8.37 of Missoula Municipal Code that's entitled "Smoking in Indoor Places of Employment in Public Places," revising that title to read "Smoking in Public Places," and amending Sections 8.37.010 through 8.37.140 to update the regulations and address e-cigarettes, codify health department smoking shelter guidelines, and Parks and Recreation Department rules restricting smoking in certain areas, affording private businesses the ability to restrict smoking within 25 feet of their doorways, vents, and other openings, and clarifying enforcement procedures.
Thank you, Ms. Ray Byan. Questions or comments from council members on the consent agenda? Ms. West.
So I had a comment on the, the smoking ordinance, if that's appropriate right now. And I am obviously voting in support of it, but there's a lot of the discussion that kind of gave me pause, and especially the lack of an exemption for vaping shops in the application of the Indoor Clean Air Act. But in thinking about it and in the discussions, we talked about a precautionary principle in legislating in that vein. And over the past few weeks, I've spent a lot of time thinking about living in a world where we would actually legislate more broadly on a precautionary principle and how that would affect where we live. And in the context of air quality, I think there's a lot of different applications, and I wish it was actually maybe applied less discriminately because it could have a great effect on, for example, the types of paint we use or the flame retardants. And then in the context of public health costs that are associated and that we're trying to prevent, we should probably also be talking about things like soft drinks and sugar and access to healthy food and gun policy and how it affects our country. And then more broadly, how differently we would legislate in the context of climate change and, for example, building codes and transportation choices, and also how we would treat things like affordable housing policy. And so I, I guess I came to realize that I actually, for one thing, I'm voting in support of the smoking ordinance, but how I wished we made, as a nation and locally and as a state, how we actually did legislate more often on the precautionary principle and the outlook into the future. So that's my comment.
Further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience here to comment on any of the items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Anderson votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes yes. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp.
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos.
Yes.
Ramos votes yes. And West. West votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and 1 one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. I'm unaware of any comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We do have one special presentation in the form of proclamation, pardon me. Ladies and gentlemen, a proclamation honoring Missoula students for standing up. This proclamation honors students across Missoula for standing up and taking action to demand that we do more to protect our students and communities. Their efforts have and will continue to influence each other, our city, and our elected officials. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries, and whereas an estimated more than 150,000 students in the United States have been on a campus where gun violence has occurred, and whereas students across Missoula County have been organizing fellow Missouians to participate in the national movement to call for gun violence prevention, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people, and whereas we renew our commitment to join with the students in Missoula to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe, now therefore I, John Engen, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana hereby recognize the 24th day of March as March for Our Lives, Students Against Gun Violence Day. And thank you, students, for being here, and other advocates for your relentless work on this pressing issue in our community and nation. We are all grateful for lots of reasons. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules provide guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these, the council and the mayor will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as the public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on a request from the Missoula Cultural Council for a contract amendment and associated resolution amending the budget. And this evening, Tom Benson, Executive Director of Arts Missoula, will provide our staff report. Because he's so highly paid, he feels like staff.
Thank you. I'm Tom Benson with Arts Missoula, which is the nonprofit arts agency for the city and county of Missoula, providing arts and cultural-related services to the Missoula community. Currently, we're in the midst of a three-year contract with the city, receiving $116,000 annually, and our overall budget is $515,000. Services include a community events calendar. We work with missoulaevents.net. We administer the Public Art Committee for the City of Missoula. We administer the Sister City Program with Necker-Gamoon, Germany, and Palmerston North, New Zealand, with periodic student and community exchanges and some events around those. We're the administration for Spark Arts Ignite Learning, the Kennedy Center Initiative in collaboration with Missoula County Public Schools, the College of Visual and Performing Arts, the City of Missoula Artists and Funding Organizations. We're also the fiscal sponsor for a number of smaller groups, particularly the Montana Book Festival. We produce First Night Missoula on New Year's Eve. We coordinate First Friday Gallery Night information, work with galleries to produce a fine arts guide. We conduct periodic economic impact studies related to the arts, which, you know, is significant to Missoula. And we recognize people and businesses in our community who make significant contributions in this area through an annual Arts and Cultural Awards coming up this week and a monthly Arts Missoula Star Program. Currently, our staffing is a 3.5 FTE. We also have several contract employees. This enhancement for the budget is for the amount of $34,424 for the remainder of fiscal 18 and adjusting our fiscal 19 funding from $116,000 to $195,000. This enhancement would provide funding for a Director of Global and Cultural Affairs, developing programs and cultural sensitivity trainings for schools, city and county employees, and other public or private groups, expanding our Sister City activities and initiatives, and developing and implementing community outreach programs specific to global issues. Also included in this enhancement is a one-time request for funding for a staff member to attend the 25th anniversary of our Sister City partnership in Necker-Gamoon this June, and there's an additional request for funding for office administration because we've moved from a two-person staff to a five-person staff in two to three years, requires some additional office management. There were a number of people who spoke in committee in favor of this, and some of them are here tonight and some of them could not be here. Mary Poole of Soft Landing, Missoula, could not make it. She wanted to reiterate how beneficial this position would be in Missoula, reducing isolation that exists, especially for non- or beginning English speakers, and they see the importance of a larger citywide program to bring cultural competency, information, and teaching to facilities and programs that are engaging our international community. Soft Landing, Missoula is not equipped at this time to step into this role, and as our international community grows, it would be a huge asset to have a person dedicated to assisting our community in a better understanding of how to appropriately welcome and celebrate all. Jerry Fetz, former dean of the University of Montana, worked with international programs and founder of the Sister City Program with Necker-Gamoon, is also in favor of this. This would bring the schools, the university, and the community together in thoughtful ways that enhance and provide more coordination in our separate efforts in terms of our international activities and hospitality. And Bob Seidenzweig spoke before, and he couldn't be here because he's traveling today to Helena to speak with one of Israel's leading water experts and meeting with the Lieutenant Governor of the Department of Agriculture there, and this water expert from Israel is about to leave to go to the UN to be their keynote speaker for global water security. The fact that he's here in Montana is significant, and there's more to that story, but specifically here, it's all about building relationships that someday may lead to jobs and cultural opportunities and will bring resources to allow Montanans to live and work in this wonderful state. He's sorry he couldn't be here. He said a lot more. So that's, that is the budget enhancement request. And there is now time for questions, or is it a time for...
There will be time for questions, but not at the moment.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Benson.
Thank you.
And I will simply supplement Mr. Benson's report. Couple of questions that have occurred to council members since committee, one is, has to do with timing. There is some urgency around this request, otherwise we wouldn't bring this to you outside of the normal budget process. And that has to do with recruitment of candidates, and in particular, the Cultural Council Arts Missoula had an opportunity to pursue a particular candidate who is uniquely fitted to this position, and we wanted to make sure that that opportunity wasn't lost. You should know that the funds for... You should know that the funds for this pro-rata share of the year will come from our cash balance. It will not raise taxes, nor will it affect our plan to compensate for issues around the accounting error, of which you are all familiar. And we plan, as a function of the 2019 budget, to shore this up and shore up the good work that the Cultural Council is doing and fill what we believe is a significant gap in the community, given some changes at the University of Montana. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed budget amendment? Mr. Lambros.
Hi, I'm Peter Lambros, the Chair of Missoula's Public Art Committee. And in a prior budget cycle, for the first time in its history, the Public Art Committee was given a quarter-time employee under the auspice of the Missoula Arts. And it was really a transformative moment for this committee that's been kind of running on just volunteer efforts for a few decades. The points I wanted to make are, I've been able to see from a front row seat the competency of Missoula Arts under Tom's leadership, and the benefit that Missoula is receiving from our volunteer committee is exponentially greater being under the organization of Tom's group. So, knowing what they bring to an effort in an organization, they're very competent. You guys know that, anybody who knows anything about them, but I just wanted to affirm the quality of their leadership. I think there'll be tangential benefits to pulling in more employment dollars within that organization because some of the quarter-time and halftime employees will probably see their positions fill out into full-time positions, which just adds stability. As good as our quarter-time employee has been, we've gone through three just because of the instability of a 10-hour position. So, I think it's not only a benefit to the immediate needs that Missoula Arts is trying to fill, but I think it's just going to make that umbrella organization stronger for all the areas that it covers. So, I encourage council to pass this motion.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the budget amendment? Mr. Krallik.
Good evening. My name's Jake Krallik, and I'm a first-year board member on Arts Missoula, also a local business owner. My wife Heather and I own Lake Missoula Tea Company here in town. I've known Tom for about the last 15 years, and we've had the pleasure of working on the New Zealand Day. We do a little touch rugby clinic through the maggots, through the Missoula maggots. And been able to build a good, solid relationship. He asked me to be on the board this year, and I accepted because I really feel strongly that our community is changing. I think that a position of this nature, global and cultural affairs, couldn't be more timely, given some of the issues that the community is dealing with. Certainly, the refugee resettlement issue is front and center, and I will add that one of our employees, Peter, is one of the translators because he learned how to speak Swahili while he was in the Peace Corps in Tanzania. So, it's something that we care a lot about, not just from, you know, the standpoint of the business, because we go to a lot of these countries in Asia and in South America, in Africa. And so, it matters to us on a business level, but it certainly matters to us on a community level as well. So, I want to encourage the city council to fund this position through a budget amendment. I strongly believe that this will help to improve cultural and international awareness in our community. I think that there's been some good work through the university and certainly now through some of the stuff that Arts Missoula wants to do. We hope to broaden some of these connections, make some new connections with maybe other sister cities or in other countries in the future. So, I really view this position as a binding agent, you know, working with some of the local nonprofit groups out there, working with the university, and of course, getting the word out into our schools, because I think that's going to be a big part, you know, of the job description, is outreach to the schools. So, I guess just to include, I think it's particularly important, given the larger political climate, you know, on the federal level, that communities like ours are responding, you know, in a positive way to some of these changes. I think we need to keep building on the work that's already been started, you know, through formerly the Cultural Council in Arts Missoula, and to increase the amount of education outreach around cultural diversity in the community. So, very timely and want to appreciate the mayor's efforts to get this ball rolling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krallik. Anyone else on the budget amendment this evening? Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I know practically nothing about this project, the gentleman involved, or anything else. There's no comments on those. I just think, since we don't have a lot of money, and apparently we don't, we're borrowing money to give away, I would urge the council not to vote for this. If we've got the money to do this, then hire another policeman to maybe stop the speeding and drunk driving on the city streets of Missoula.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Peter McDonough. I do work for Jake Krallik at the Tea Company, and I had come here tonight to represent Mary Poole from Soft Landing, but thankfully she got her comments earlier. So, I can't speak for either of them, but I will speak as the interpreter for the International Rescue Committee and for Soft Landing, and as the only employed Swahili interpreter in Missoula that I know of, to support the funding for this position. The cultural isolation that he mentioned, that a lot of the refugees feel, especially if they're new to the English language, is very real. And it's something that most of us have never experienced to the extent that they do. So, a position like this could really help bridge a lot of gaps and actually save money in the future when it comes to social services and save frustration that happens on both ends and that I often experience as the one in the middle of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Ramos?
I'm very new to the council, so this is a truly sincere question. So, this money couldn't otherwise be allocated to help out with that $3 million error, and why is that? I guess I'm a little bit confused just seeing that it is coming from the general fund. If you could just kind of reiterate.
Yeah, so, based on budget savings, there's enough money in that cash balance to be able to deal with this and not cause any consternation around correcting the budget error. Further questions? Seeing none. Ms. Harp? Is this where this lives?
I move that we adopt a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the City of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 budget and capital improvement program, to increase the total city budgeted expenditures by $34,424 and appropriate the general fund expenditures in the amount of $34,424 in order to provide additional funding to Arts Missoula or the Missoula Cultural Council for services provided on behalf of the city.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Ms. Hess?
Thanks. Mayor Inge, I'd like to thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is a very timely and important piece of business, and I'm very proud to support it. In our time with, in our polarizing, divisive reactionary time, I think it's really important that we spend a lot of effort on cultural competency. I have the pleasure of working at my day job at the University of Montana with a lot of international students very regularly, and those interactions enrich my life and enrich the lives of everyone around them. So, I think it's a great program, and I'm happy to support it, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to speak briefly to, over the years that I've been on council, we have heard annually in great updates about the economic impact of the Missoula Arts Council and how those dollars turn into a lot of dollars in this community. So, I just wanted to reemphasize that, first of all, that I think the Missoula Arts Council earns its keep and greatly impacts our community on so many levels that this is a good thing to be doing. But I also wanted to comment, I know several nurses in Missoula who work for the county as public health nurses who have interacted with some of the refugees since coming here, and they tell me their stories sometimes, nothing about their personal medical issues, of course, but just how they're doing in the community, how they're settling in, how it's going, and it's hard. And these are brave people who have come here to climb this mountain. And, you know, on city council, we paint streets and we repair potholes and we do all that kind of stuff and do the best we can with that, but sometimes we do something like this, too. And I think this is a quality of life issue on so many levels for people who have come here, for education in the schools, to be making these connections with kids in the schools and for the rest of us in the community, too. So, I'm in favor of it, and thanks for bringing it.
Ms. Kares?
Thanks. As mentioned during the Administration and Finance Committee on February 28th, I don't think that we should add staff to the city's base budget outside of the budget process. This is not about just a one-time expense of $34,000. Providing public comment and scrutiny opportunities now outside of the budget process provides this position easier passage than if brought forth during the many incredibly difficult decisions that must be made during each budget process. Additionally, the urgency plea is, I think, a false argument. The only reason there is currently a person identified for this position is that this job was posted via Missoula Job Service in January with knowledge that funding was not certain. So, I will note tonight and hope to see this proposal as part of the fiscal year 19 budget process.
Ms. Becerra?
As a foreigner myself, I appreciate the efforts that this community and many communities of this size have to bridge the gap for, or to make it easier for those of us who are not from here to better engage in our communities. So, I am in support of this motion, and I appreciate having this position available here in Missoula.
Ms. Ramos?
So, obviously, I've spoken in favor of this. Arts Missoula provides programming that is one of the great equalizers in this community. Ninety percent of what they offer is free to the community. At almost every event that you've been to, whether it is First Night, which does require tickets, but has come through their office, and over the past decade, they've done that with two or three people. And just like when I fought for money for suicide prevention, they can only expand their programs when they have the ability to do outreach. And getting this position will allow them to finally start doing some outreach, bridging those gaps, getting out of the office and expanding those programs, and that's extremely important. And yes, this is absolutely going to come up again, and I'll be in support of it during the budget season and the next year and the year after that as well.
Ms. Ramos?
Thank you. I just want to thank my fellow council members for the compassion they've shown in support of this, and I also understand the great impact that Arts Missoula has on the community. But unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support it based on a couple of different things. So, first of all, I think that the Cultural Council could possibly raise this funding from the private sector if they could prove the need for it. And secondly, I agree with Ms. Kares that this does face less scrutiny, and it's a little bit easier to pass when it's not in the budget process. And also, we are in a bit of a budget crisis right now. We do have the $3 million error, and while this was a budget savings for this year, there's a lot of different things that need our attention right now, so unfortunately, I won't be able to support this motion, but I would look forward to hearing it in the budget process. So, thank you.
Mr. Bari?
Missoula has a long and rich history of supporting the arts and cultural events, both locally and internationally, and I think it's one of the things that makes Missoula uniquely Missoula. And I totally understand the comments of Ms. Kares and Mr. Ramos. I, too, have some consternation over these kinds of budget requests, but I think it's, if this is a priority for us as a council and as a community, then I think it's incumbent upon us during budget season to recognize the fact that we're making these expenditures now and that we're prioritizing this over something else, and we need to be careful and judicious with how we go about spending money during the budgeting process. I've had good conversations with folks about this on council and with the mayor, and I'm looking forward to supporting this motion.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the motion to adopt the resolution, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes no. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp.
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos?
No.
Ramos votes no. West? West votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. And would anyone like to change their vote? Have nine ayes, two nays, and one absent.
And the motion is approved. Thank you all very much. Our second public hearing of the evening.
Point of order, Mary.
I'm sorry?
We actually have a second motion on this item about the contract.
Oh, hi, Paul. I got in a hurry.
Yes, you did. The second motion is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the agreement with Missoula Cultural Council, DBA Arts Missoula, to fund various arts and cultural programs for FY 2018 in the amount of $34,424.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, on that motion, Becerra. Becerra votes yes. Kares. Kares votes no. Dabari. Dabari votes yes. Harp. Harp votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Merritt. Merritt votes yes. Ramos. Ramos votes no. West. West votes yes. Anderson. Anderson votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? It's nine ayes, two nays, and one abset.
Thank you, and that motion is approved as well. Our second public hearing this evening is a request by the Missoula Police Department for the purpose of complying with Section 78105 of Montana Code annotated authorizing local governments to establish procedures for local law enforcement to provide for the care, restitution, sale, donation, or return or destruction of unclaimed tangible personal property. And our staff report this evening comes from Captain Oddlin.
Hello, I'm Captain Chris Oddlin with the Missoula Police Department. I come before you because we are asking for you to pass a resolution that will comply with a newly enacted Montana Code 7-8-105, and it will allow us to draft policies to streamline the process of destruction of property. And by destruction, I mean donation, sometimes it is actually destruction, sometimes we throw stuff away, sometimes we auction stuff. Basically, we're in possession of almost 70,000 pieces of property, and the reality of that smacks us in the face every day right now while we're trying to get ready to move all 70,000 pieces to a new building. So, any help that we can get is appreciated.
Thank you, Cap. With that, I will open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Questions from council? Seeing none. This happens in public safety and health. Ms. Kares?
I move that we adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council for the purpose of complying with Section 7-8-105, Montana Code annotated, that authorizes local governments to establish procedures to allow local law enforcement to provide for the care, restitution, sale, donation, return, or destruction of unclaimed tangible personal property that may come into the possession of a police officer or law enforcement entity of the local government for which state law does not otherwise provide a procedure for disposition.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution, Kares. Kares? Kares votes yes. DeBary? DeBary votes yes. Harp? Harp votes yes. Hess? Hess votes yes. Jones? Jones votes yes. Merritt? Merritt votes yes. Ramos? Ramos votes yes. West? West votes yes. Anderson? Anderson votes yes. Armstrong? Armstrong votes yes. And Becerra? Becerra votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? It's eleven ayes and one absent.
And the resolution's approved. Our third public hearing this evening is on a conditional use request at 2115 Johnson Street for residential storage warehouse. Our staff report this evening comes from Ms. Baker.
Good evening. My name's Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services. And I am here tonight to tell you about a request from Brian Walker of BTW Inc. He is represented by Aaron Hanks of Gavin Hanks Architects, who is here this evening. The request is for a residential storage warehouse. It's a conditional use request at 2115 Johnson Street. This is the location of the property. It's marked with a red star. It has frontage on both Johnson Street and West Kent Avenue, although the building entrance is on the south side of the building. It fronts the alley and it will continue to do so. This area is part of Missoula's Ward 6 and the Franklin to the Fort Neighborhood Council. This is a closer photo of the property. To the west, you can see that there are single and duplex residential developments. To the south, there is a towing and truck rental service. This property is zoned C2-4, which is community commercial, where a residential storage warehouse requires a conditional use approval. According to our Missoula City Growth Policy, the land use designation for this area is community mixed use. Mixed use areas include the basic employment and services necessary for a vibrant community, where establishments in this category draw from the community as a whole for the employee and customer base and are sized accordingly. They serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. The designation covers a broad range of functions, including retail, education, financial institutions, professional services, offices, and residences. This is the full site plan. The residential storage use will be contained within the existing building, which has a footprint on the ground of 13,800 square feet. The building is two stories. There will be only one customer entrance to the storage units and that, they do not have access from the exterior of the building. Along Kent Avenue, there will be landscaping plus the addition of a curbside sidewalk that extends the length of the parcel. We'll talk more about that sidewalk in a little while. The addition of the sidewalk along the Kent Avenue frontage will complete the network, the sidewalk network on this side of the block. On the south side of the building, facing the alley, is where the parking and the customer access entrance will be located. This is the floor plan for the main floor of the building. The second floor is similar altogether. The applicant proposes 275 storage spaces, all of which, as mentioned before, are accessed internally. There are in Title 20, Section 204110, specific standards that apply to residential storage warehouses and particularly when they are permitted as a conditional use. I'll describe the standards and how this project meets them. There may be no direct access of lockers onto public right-of-way. As we've discussed, all of the access to the storage units will be internal to the building. Residential storage warehouses must have frontage on a collector. Johnson Street is a major collector. Driveways and interior aisles and walkways must be paved. The site plan shows paving in all the required areas. And we'll talk about some conditions of approval to ensure that sidewalks and paving meet Title 20 and Title 12 standards. There are limitations on what can be stored. These limitations apply to explosives, radioactive materials, and other dangerous or hazardous materials. The condition of approval requires that the applicant record an affidavit approved by the city attorney to this effect and that the approved document will remain on file with Development Services. Finally, the only permitted use on the site is for storage. And the site plan shows that all available interior space is devoted to storage and there is no other use. I will show you now some pictures of the existing building elevations. This is the south side of the, this is the south side of the building that faces the alley. It is where the single customer entrance and most of the parking will be located. This is the east elevation that faces Johnson Street. Just to the left of where this picture cuts off is the driveway entrance to the site. This is the north elevation of the building, which fronts Kent Avenue. And now I'll show you some of the proposed building elevations. There are minor changes proposed to the exterior of the building, but the footprint will not change or expand. This again is the south elevation that faces the alley with the customer entrance. This is the east elevation that faces Johnson Street. And this is the north elevation of the building that faces Kent Avenue. Emergency exits have been added at four locations along this facade. In the next few slides, I will cover the conditions, the five recommended conditions of approval for this project. The first is the standard condition, which states that the project will comply with all applicable standards of Title 20 and other Missoula municipal codes. Plans submitted for building permits will substantially comply with those reviewed as part of this conditional use request. The second condition requires the applicant to install curb along the southern edge of the paved parking area, the full length of the parcel in accordance with city engineering standards. When you're looking at this slide, that red line along the bottom, just above where it says alley, is where this curb will be installed. Condition of approval number three states that it requires the applicant to install a five-foot-wide curbside sidewalk, the length of the Kent Avenue frontage, and ADA improvements at the sidewalk at the corner of Kent and Johnson. The sidewalk will connect to the existing sidewalk in front of the residential parcels to the west of the subject property. Normally, as you know, Title 12, Section 1212060 require sidewalks to be boulevard sidewalks unless one of five criteria apply and an exception is approved. On account of the jog in the right-of-way, which you can see here in the center, it's where the butte addition and the car line addition come together and the right-of-way jogs a bit to the south. Because of this, the city engineer determined that criteria one applies because the jog causes insufficient width of right-of-way for seven-foot boulevard and five-foot sidewalk. Additionally, criteria five applies because planned sidewalks in the right-of-way on adjacent properties aren't consistent with boulevard sidewalks. City engineer thus recommended this exception for curbside sidewalks here and the Development Services Director has approved it. We also received a question at the LUP committee meeting on Wednesday as to why in this instance, we did not ask for an easement to allow the boulevard sidewalk and to permit it to be inside on the applicant's private property. There was a response from the city engineer, which we received a little bit late today. And so I don't think it made it to sire. I hope you received the email. What he explained is that there are certain instances in our codes when we can ask for this and they are typically new developments, such as a townhome exemption or a subdivision. But there is no provision with an existing project or a conditional use that they can ask for that easement in this instance. And that is why he has recommended the curbside sidewalk. Condition of approval number four is to install a curb to separate the length of the head-in parking spaces fronting the sidewalk and increase the width of that sidewalk along that frontage, where you see that red bar, from five feet wide, as shown on the site development plan, to a minimum of seven feet wide. And that is to meet federal ADA requirements for a five-foot clear space for an accessible route in the event that there is a two-foot overhang at the front of those parking spaces. The last condition of approval, number five, requires the separation of grade between the sidewalk along the full length of the south facade of the building that provides separation between the parallel parking spaces and that sidewalk. This can be accomplished either by means of installing a new sidewalk that is separated from grade by at least four inches, or by the installation of bollards which separate the existing at-grade sidewalk from the adjacent parallel parking spaces that are along this sidewalk. These are the conditional use review criteria. We will look at these and the way that the applicant proposes to meet them, or I'm sorry, the way that this use is compatible with the surrounding area in terms of the character relating to the site and building design, with, also with the operating characteristics and considering traffic safety for all modes of transportation. Project will comply with all applicable standards of the Title 20 zoning ordinance as required by condition of approval number one and that will be verified at the time of building permit. Project is compatible in character with nearby uses. Surrounding development varies among residential, commercial, and industrial. This is an existing building with no significant changes proposed except for a different use. The project will enhance public convenience with upgrades to both public sidewalk and boulevards adjacent to the property, plus providing landscaping along the building frontage. The hours of operation are proposed from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily and these are generally compatible with surrounding uses. The impact to nearby residential's development should be minimized since there is only one entrance and it faces the alley. Across from it is another commercial enterprise. Finally, the traffic generated by the residential storage warehouse can be adequately managed by the surrounding infrastructure, particularly Johnson Street, which is a major collector. As a result, staff recommends approval of the residential storage warehouse conditional use in the C24 Community Commercial Zoning District at 2115 Johnson Street, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval. That is my presentation. If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, as will Mr. Hanks.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I appreciate that. Anyone on behalf of the applicant today?
Apparently that's me. I'm Aaron Hanks with Gavin Hanks Architects. I prepared the submittal, so. I'd just like to say that during the submittal, we worked very closely with the planning staff, with zoning, with engineering, with the fire marshal, really with all the steps that it took to get us to this point. I think we've availed ourselves to try and repurpose this big building that probably has some limited uses. We've tried to introduce some new materials to the outside to soften the appearance a little bit. We feel like some of the infrastructure improvements are a benefit to this area, so we're not asking for any variances or breaking of the rules or anything. We've worked with this developer quite a bit and he's willing to make sure he plays by the rules and we're willing to help him do that. Willing to answer any questions about the development that I can on his behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Hanks. Appreciate that. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone care to comment on this proposed conditional use? Yes, ma'am?
I'm Priscilla Sotero. I live in the townhome directly next to the building that's going to be changed. You're talking about putting up a fence, a wood fence, between the building and the houses. But my concern was hours of operation. You said seven to 10. I'm wondering if they would be willing to put up some sort of surveillance because we have two other storage units, actually three, within the neighborhood. We don't have a lot of break-ins, but in last November, we had somebody going through all of them. So be it that I live right next door, I'm not the townhome right next, but I'm the next one over. I'm not against this proposal by any means, but I take it on the west side, you have a big door that's going to be replaced to a regular building for slots, so that opening, the big door, won't be there anymore. And the fence, according to this thing, you're removing the fence in the front? So that's why I'm just thinking security. Since we live right next door, you can't always guarantee what people are storing. At seven to 10, I don't really mind 10 o'clock, but I just don't want a lot of drama going on. We don't really have a lot of it now, but periodically, somebody goes a little whack-a-doodle. So you know, if you're living right next door, do I need to be putting up surveillance on my neighborhood or what's, you know? That's my only concern.
And ma'am? Thank you, ma'am. Would you mind telling us your name for the record one more time? I didn't catch it.
Priscilla Sotero.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hanks, would you like to address that?
I think I can answer on behalf of the owner. And we talked a little bit about this after the planning meeting last week. This is probably the third or fourth storage unit project. I don't know if I can proudly say that or not, that I've worked with this developer. But we did talk a little bit about security. And he did tell me that the facility will be heavily monitored. There will be security cameras, both inside and out. He does do that at all of his facilities. It will be lit to a certain extent, but not to the extent that it'll be a bother to the neighbors. It'll obviously comply with Missoula's ordinances regarding lighting. But there certainly will be security, so.
So ma'am, I'm going to have you guys have that conversation after the fact. Anyone else care to comment on the proposed conditional use? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council? Mr. DeBary?
We also spoke during LUP about the fencing. And I'd like to ask Mr. Hanks to come back up and address the issue regarding fencing, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah. So currently, there is a fence that surrounds the property. It's a non-compliant chain link fence with a barbed wire top over it. Initially, the applicant, I think his first choice would be just to leave it as is. We talked about that and we understand that the barbed wire portion of it isn't compliant and that would have to go. We then talked about, we thought it was a better idea just to remove the fence in its entirety. That allows us to maintain the landscaping to provide for a better, it just makes it nicer. Most of the security and the access is controlled at the entrance of the building. So the existing fence will go. It's my understanding that the fence to the west, which would be between this property and the residential units, will either remain or will be rebuilt for buffering or for privacy. But right now, there's no plan to have a fence on the property at all. So we're going to remove the existing fence as it is.
Ms. Kares?
A follow-up to Mr. DeBary's question and then another question about security. So I'm sorry, the fence on the west side isn't the property's or, I mean, it's there. So I don't understand what you're saying when you're saying there won't be a fence.
I think the fence on the west side will, the fence on the west side, I believe, will remain just simply because it's a barrier between the commercial use and the residential use. I think it's in fairly poor condition, but yeah, I don't know if there's an image of it or not. Our plan is to call for a fence there simply as a buffer, mainly for traffic because you'll have vehicles driving through this property and exiting out closer to that residential property. So we'd want to put a fence there as a buffer between the commercial use and the residential. But it's not enclosing the property at all. It's just a buffer fence. It would be like a cedar fence or something.
Okay. May I ask my other question? A follow-up on the security question. On last Wednesday, I think that it wasn't so, it was a piece of, the security question was about if there was a vandalism incident. And then a piece of the security question was about whether there would be like an assault incident because there is not anyone on site. And I just wanted to know, like, does the owner have a plan of reviewing those every day? Did you talk about, could you talk in more detail about the security discussion you had with the owner?
I'm sorry, I didn't discuss it in quite that detail, but he confirmed that the facility will be monitored by electronically. It'll be monitored by cameras. They have a central rental office and I believe that's where all of his facilities are monitored. I don't know if it's live monitoring or if it's just recorded and then monitored on an as-needed basis if there's an incident. I'm not sure how that operates, so I can't answer that. I'm sorry.
Further questions? Ms. Merritt?
I was just thinking about all of that.
I was just thinking about all of that chain link that's up around the property right now, and wondering if the owner would consider donating that instead of sending it to the landfill? Just a thought.
As the designer, I'm a big proponent of reusing those materials, and I would certainly recommend that we do that, for sure. I would make that recommendation to him, absolutely.
Further questions? All right, seeing none, Mr. DeBary?
I move that council approve the residential, let me start that again. I move that council approve the residential storage warehouse conditional use in the C-24 Community Commercial Zoning District at 2115 Johnson Street in accordance with Missoula City Zoning Ordinance Title 20, Sections 20.10.020D, 20.40.110, 20.85.070, and 20.105.050G, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. May I speak to that?
You may.
So I want to thank Ms. Baker and Mr. Hanks for their willingness to answer all of our questions during LUP and this evening. I would say that this probably residential storage probably isn't the highest and best use necessarily of, in this neighborhood, but I think, as Mr. Hanks had mentioned and others have an interest, this is a creative reuse of a property. And I really do appreciate the extra effort that the applicant has made in trying to address the fencing that surrounds it and improving the exterior look of the building and also adding the additional sidewalk infrastructure for the neighborhood, because as we know, there's going to be a park constructed across the street, and that would be very critical infrastructure to have sidewalks in the area. So I'm planning to support this, and thanks so much for your willingness to answer our questions.
And discussion on the motion. Ms. Kears?
Thanks. Yeah, thanks, Mr. DeBary, for the motion and for speaking to it. Much of what you said is what I too feel, and so apologies for repeating a little bit of it, but I want to, as the representative for the board, I just want to say that I support this project. Like Mr. Hanks, I have a bit of hesitation around wholeheartedly supporting storage units, but I do, because this project is improving the community with the facade improvement, the fence removal, and the sidewalk addition. And with the new Montana railing park going in across the street, that sidewalk is important, and so happy to support the project and appreciate all the work that went into submitting a good project proposal and presentation. Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Jones?
I think my colleagues made some really good points. I agree, it's hard putting storage units in, I would really prefer to see these elsewhere. This is a section of land that is walkable distance to an elementary school, to a park, to retail and restaurants, and it's on two bus routes. So I'm going to just hope that this is a good reconfiguration and a reuse of this building. It doesn't preclude, in the long run, residential going in 15 or 20 years down the road, and I appreciate you're putting some infrastructure in and making it look nicer for the neighborhood. So, and within our conditional use analysis, it's appropriate, so I appreciate the work. I think it is a conscientious approach, and just keep residential in the back of your mind for down the road. Thanks.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the conditional use request, DeBary votes yes. Harp?
Yes.
Harp votes yes. Hess votes yes. Jones votes yes. Merritt votes yes. Ramos votes yes. West votes yes. Anderson votes yes. Armstrong votes, I'm sorry, no. Armstrong votes no. Becerra votes yes. And Kears votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? It's 10 ayes, one nay, one absent.
And the conditional use is approved. We have no more public hearings this evening. I'll pass on communications from the mayor. We'll begin council comments this evening with Ms. West, Mr. Hess, Ms. Becerra, Ms. Jones, Ms. Harp, Mr. DeBary.
I would like to remind folks that tomorrow evening at 5:30 to 7:00 at the Doubletree is our third and final workshop regarding the Design Excellence Project. We've had fantastic attendance at the previous two workshops, and this will be a good time for folks to come in and hear what our consultant, Norrie Winter and company, has put together in terms of trying to work on design and form and function of our corridors in downtown. I think, as I said, we've had great attendance at the previous workshops and great feedback from the community, and so I'd like to invite everyone to come back down and see what Mr. Winter has put together for us.
Mr. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was just a couple of quick things I wanted to address tonight. The first one I wasn't planning to address, but some folks brought it up during public comment, and I see Mr. Lambros is here, so I just wanted to briefly address the whole mall fiasco that we've all heard about in the news, and I just want to preface it by saying this is not in any way a personal attack on anybody that voted on this project or on Mr. Lambros or on the mayor. It's just a difference of opinion regarding the policy of tax increment financing, and I'm not alone in this. This is a fairly bipartisan thing, I think, at this point. Jerry Brown, who is far from a Republican, he's the governor of California, he also has a lot of concerns about tax increment financing, and the main issue that I wanted to bring up regarding this whole project is that, from my understanding, again, I'm new to council, is that the primary purpose of TIF is to eliminate blight. That's all it really says in Montana code annotated, and it appears to be kind of an afterthought when we're looking at these projects, we talk about all the jobs that will be created, the amount of revenue that will be generated in additional property taxes, but we don't really talk about the blight that's going to be eliminated until after the fact to justify it. So in my opinion, the mall wasn't really blighted in that area. Didn't see, there were tumbleweeds. I was just in downtown Spokane, and there was definitely some blight there, it just didn't seem to be blighted to me. And another issue with TIF is the recapture of it, so the mall ultimately, and any additional revenue generated from this will be recaptured and can't go to the general fund. And addition, I'd like to see maybe some different studies to determine what we decide to work on as far as roads for demand, studies of citizens, surveys, complaints, as opposed to maybe folks in the private sector coming and asking for that. And additionally, the mall's great, I think it's a great development, and unfortunately, it does have a lot of lower-wage jobs, and I think that's something that everybody on the council is concerned about, and we're using taxpayer money to improve the city as well. But ultimately, it did help out. Peter Lambros did say, he's right there, sorry if we're using you in the third person, but he did say in the media that they couldn't get one of the customers that they were trying to without this additional road in there. So when we did put that road in, intentionally or not, we did raise the sale of the value of the mall when it was sold. So that was just something that I wanted to address. Again, it's just a difference of policy and a point of view, so I just wanted to bring that up, and thanks for taking the time to listen.
Ms. Armstrong?
I wasn't going to talk about TIF either, but I will. I live a quarter mile from the mall. I have been, I've, since 2008, I have watched every TIF dollar go into that district, and I have watched crime be decreased. I have watched the neighborhood be improved, and I can attest that we did the right thing for the right reasons, and if you don't live there, you don't understand what, how bad that was, and you don't see the folks camping out there in the middle of the field and the things that go on. So I appreciate the investment that's been made in URD 3 and the connectivity that has, I know we have some vocal minority that comes and speaks about this, but I live there, and it has been improved, and it will continue to improve. And the reason why we have a shortage of labor right now is because of all the projects being generated by TIF funds. We have a lot of people working in high-paying jobs in construction right now. So what I was going to talk about was, I asked Representative Dudik to come tonight to talk about her proclamation, but she didn't get into the mayor's office in time, and she just wanted to make sure that we would consider that next year and that every year, that we have a day recognizing public service and women in public service. So anyway, I won't read it again, but I thought that was great she came.
Ms. Armstrong? Or, I'm sorry.
One, 2.0 in Word 5. So first of all, I'd like to thank whoever gave me some Girl Scout cookies. I literally was just thinking, when I saw my little neighbor girl walking, like, someone needs to come knock on my door and sell me Girl Scout cookies, so thank you for that. And I do want to thank Representative Dudik for coming and bringing forth her proclamation, and I want to recognize that the majority of Missoula council is women. So thank you all for taking of your time and serving, and thank you for all of the male colleagues supporting all of the work that we are doing together to make our community great. And I do, I guess I, I'm going to chime in on the TIF funding thing, because I had to learn about Mary Avenue when I was walking those doors. That was the very first neighborhood I went and knocked on when I first started knocking doors in August, and I heard a lot about it because it was right in the middle of the construction zone. And the interesting thing I found out in my effort to educate myself was the extension of Mary Avenue had been on the books for coming on almost 20 years. So I think that it was a part of our greater design plan and our greater connectivity, and, you know, we don't have magic wands, and we can't do all the projects we want to do at the moment, we want to do them, and we have to plan and put forth design guidelines, and I think that that is an important piece of the conversation that isn't being brought up, is the fact that that wasn't done because we wanted to somehow make the mall more attractive. We wanted to connect those neighborhoods, and it had been on the books for quite some time, and we were just following through with the guidelines that we had set forth a council generation or two before us. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Ms. Merritt?
I would like to say thanks to the mayor and my fellow city council people for supporting the proclamation for the March for Our Lives Students Against Gun Violence Day, and I've been working with the students who are organizing this, and they are absolutely inspiring, you know, in spite of all that they've already got going on with schoolwork and extracurricular activities. They're very engaged young people, and I'm really excited for what they're going to bring our community in the future.
Ms. Kears?
Thanks. I wanted to talk about three things. First, as you, most of the community will have noticed, Russell Street construction has begun. We're something like 18 days into this two-day project. If you text the word Russell to 41411, you will be receiving up-to-the-minute updates about it, including when it was closed for 14 minutes on Friday. And I think that the communication team will do a really good job, and I think that people will want to know what's happening. So again, that's 41411. Second, I too wanted to comment about the Celebrating Women in Public Office Day. I was at a presentation earlier today, and someone there brought up the fact that both of the Justice of the Peace for Missoula are women. Our one municipal court judge is a woman, two of the four district court judges are women, both of the standing masters are women, eight of 12 city councilors are women, and two of three county commissioners are women, which is the vast majority of all of those offices. And so I am proud of Missoula for electing the right person, who often turns out is a woman, and I hope that that will continue to happen. Lastly, I wanted to speak a bit about something else that I went to today, which was a presentation from the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge regarding a grant that the Missoula County received to study the disproportionate number of Native Americans incarcerated at the Missoula County Detention Facility. As many councilors who went on the tour of the Pre-Release Center can attest, there are more Native people in our criminal justice system than there are out on the street. Today, I learned that the population of the Missoula County Detention Facility is 14% Native American, while our county population is 3% Native American. There was so much more to share about recommendations, and the Missoula Indian Health Center was there, and a lot of good minds at the table, and I think that the work that's happening is good and important and behind and exciting, and, oh, the county attorney is also a woman. And so I just wanted to give you a brief update about that and let you know that that's something I'll continue to tabs on and will happily talk about at any time. Thanks.
With that, pardon me, we have no committee reports this evening, nor do we have any items of new business. Are there any additional items to be referred? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous communications petitions, reports, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.